So, our first item is to approve the minutes of September 18th. Has everybody had a chance to read through? Any discussion you want to have? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 18th, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. We now have an opportunity for public comment. Are there any people who would like to comment publicly or otherwise? Okay. So, we'll move on to reports for the school committee. Dr. Antonucci?
Yeah, so very briefly, two quick things. First, last time I told you that our school resource officer, Nick Jamali, had been promoted. In fact, it was on Twitter tonight, so I think this morning, it must have been today. But we do have a new school resource officer, which makes sure we get him to a meeting at some point to introduce him. But it's Mike, Michael Bolz, V-O-L-Z-E. We had a chance to meet with him, with our leadership team, and I think he's going to be an exceptional replacement for Nick. We're going to miss Nick a lot, but I think he's, I think Mike's going to be a great, great fit for our schools. So, on the, on our tentative school committee meeting agenda, we have to at some point revise our memorandum of understanding with the police department. I think it's set for late November. Maybe we'll try to tie in if, if we get that done, which I hope to do, we'll make sure Mike gets here. Second thing is, on the personal front, and you all know this, but I just did want to announce that we did conclude our search for Jerry Penuzak, who's our HR director. We concluded our search for his replacement. We're going to miss Jerry. He's retiring on, on November 1st. And we hired a gentleman by the name of Dr. Patrick Dillon. And I gave you a little bit about Dr. Dillon's background, but he's just a tremendous candidate. He had over 12 years of corporate human resource experience before he decided to go back to school and get into public education. And he became a teacher and then was a building principal. Actually, I said this in my email, but it found with his, my fifth and sixth grade alma mater, the Morris Pond School. And then he became the assistant superintendent for human resources in Whitman Hansen. And he's, he's just a tremendous candidate. His references are impeccable. Everybody who works with him just calls him a great leader and a great person and, you know, a great fit for their organizations. I know he's going to be great with us also. He's also a military veteran, has been, has done five, five deployments, as far back as Desert Storm, as a Marine, and now in the Coast Guard Reserves. He's just a really amazing individual. So, he's set to start on November 1st. He'll do a couple of transition days with Jerry on the way out, but we're really excited. So, yeah. That's that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Kleiner?
I just have a few quick things. MCAS results, the student score reports are going to be mailed home tomorrow to families, so that should be arriving home in a few days. We'll be reporting on the district MCAS results at a later school committee meeting, like we did last year. And we have our next full day, PD day, coming up on Friday. So, the building-based professional development that will be going on is a lot of safety and security training with Officer, Sergeant Jamali. We'll also be doing some training for the teaching staff on our new district curriculum accommodation plan that is being rolled out. And we have some social studies going on, so the teachers will have a great day of PD, hopefully, on Friday. So, no school for students.
Great. Okay, Ms. Blake?
Just a quick update for tonight. So, I just wanted to follow up. At the last meeting, we had briefly talked about some of the budget increases that we saw last fiscal year, and one of them was the trash and recycling lines. So, Kelly, you had asked kind of what the recycling program looks like. So, I have the flyer that actually the town facilities director had put together, which is displayed within the district. So, I just have copies of that. And it just details out all of the, it's a single stream program and all of the different recycling products. And then the second update that I just had for tonight was, we have finalized and submitted the end of, the end of year report to this date. So, that was finalized and submitted on the deadline date, which was October 1st.
Thank you very much. Good. Okay, Tanner?
All right, so, oh, there we go. I just have a few things tonight. The first thing I have is the annual Ducks Buds banquet, which was scheduled for tomorrow night. And the reason why I say that, because Jess just texted me as I was walking in, and it's postponed until probably next week. But I just want to put it on there because we're both really excited for that. But it's the first major event for Ducks Buds, and it gives the students an opportunity to meet with their buds for the first time, if they haven't yet, and to also meet with their buds' parents. And there's a whole bunch of different bonding activities for the students and the buds to do together, which is awesome. The second thing I have is tomorrow, the student council is rolling out their first, it's the first of their balance theme this year. So, instead of doing one week of stress-less week that we normally do towards midterms, we're breaking that up throughout the year. So, tomorrow's is be involved. So, the first thing we have going on before school in the cafeteria is a club fair, so all the clubs will be meeting. Students can get a chance to go in there, check out the clubs, hopefully join some. And there's also another part of it, which is just being like a good person, holding doors, helping people out if they see that. So, teachers will kind of be on the lookout for that and report anything good they see. My third thing is, next week is Spirit Week, which you probably all know by now what it is. But everyone in high school is really excited for that. Our themes this year are America Day on Tuesday, Class Day on Wednesday, Pop Culture Day on Thursday, and Decades Day on Friday. And then something we tried last year and we're doing again this year, which was a great success, was the PTA gave us some money and we're doing a hillside cookout on, at the football game on Friday. So, we just, we got scuzzaro on the grill and it's, anyone who's at the football game can come over and get some free food, and it's some good bonding. And the last thing I have is, next Saturday is the homecoming dance. So, we haven't had one in a couple of years, but it's been changed up a little and it's kind of had some revamping. And give a lot of credit, obviously, to Audrey Mitchell, who's the president of student council, but she's been working really hard on that. And we sold tickets today, and in our first day, we already sold 40 tickets, which is pretty good. So, we're all very excited for that. So, that's all I have.
Good job.
My daughter bought a dress.
Awesome.
That's great.
Great, thank you very much. I had a few things. I wanted to let the rest of you know that Josh Cutler, our state representative, wrote a very nice letter to Commissioner Riley regarding the Blizzard Bags, following our discussion of Blizzard Bags and the fact that the state had kind of canceled the program. So, he wrote a very nice and extensive letter in support of allowing districts to make their own choice about whether they use Blizzard Bags or not, and extolling how our program had worked. So, I wanted to recognize him for doing that and thank him, because that's very helpful. Also, on another political note, the Student Opportunity, Education Opportunity Act is now, it's been approved by the Joint Commission on Education, and it's now going to be debated in the state legislature. In your Mass Bulletin, there are a number of descriptions about various features of the program, but basically it allocates, it's advocating for more money for, more state funding for local education. So, so it's worth following the discussion, and we should all be reaching out to our local legislators to ask them to support this bill and advocate for our type, you know, these types of districts that, that we're in, that we also need state support. Rural districts have their own set of issues to do with state funding, and so that's something to keep, we should all keep our eye on. And then, within the district, I attended the curriculum committee meeting, the launch meeting on the 26th, which was very informative, and so I'm looking forward to hearing more from them, and I'll report back when it's appropriate. So, anyway, does anybody else have anything they'd like to report?
I was just going to say, I was fortunate to attend. Commissioner Riley visited Ducksbury yesterday morning, and, I think it was yesterday morning, I thought he was fantastic. He's got a lot of energy. He spoke perfectly to the audience of middle school, high school kids. And I loved his focus of, let's get fun back in learning. You know, he acknowledged, yes, we need MCAS, and, but, you know, parents, I have older kids, and we've bemoaned the fact that learning was not fun for a really long time, and it's been proven that if kids have a connection, they learn better. So, I think he's spot on, and it was, it was a great presentation. It was short and sweet and a little tear-jerker video and really good focus. So, it was nice.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to various discussion items. So, the first item is the school improvement plan reports from the building principals. Hello?
So, we are here tonight to present our school improvement plans. As we normally do, we, since we have the whole plan, we're just going to highlight some areas in each of our plans, but we're here to answer any questions that you have about anything in the plan. So, I'm going to start with the Chandler School Improvement Plan. So, I worked-
Do you want me to flip?
Please. So, I worked with the Chandler School Council this year to develop the school improvement plan, which is really closely tied to the strategic plan. So, a lot of our wording for our goals are directly from the strategic plan, which was beautiful, because everything just really fit together, and it was exactly what we were on track to be working on anyway. The strategic plan just helped us to really focus what we wanted to do in a nice way. So, for the first pillar, for social emotional well-being, we are going to be examining interpersonal structures and programming and implementing assurances to ensure that every child is connected with at least one adult. So, at Chandler, we are, we do feel like kids are really connected to their classroom teachers and specialist teachers. But we wanted to sort of take that one step further and have school-wide initiatives that allows them to be connected to their school community at the whole. So, we participated last week in Start with Hello Week, which is, which you might remember we did last year as well. And basically, each day we had a different focus for how kids can, you know, practice those skills of, you know, finding someone who might need to be involved, you know, get involved and say hello and introduce themselves, and all of those little social skills that kids are still learning at our age level. We, one of the most exciting things that we've done this year is we have added an additional recess at Chandler. So, it's 20 minutes of classroom time, actually, where the classroom teacher is taking them outside in addition to their recess at lunch. So, we've actually, we haven't quite focused on what the name of that recess is, so, but it has an SEL focus. So, basically, what we're doing is asking teachers to not necessarily be teaching during recess, but, you know, focusing the kids on some maybe guided practice of social skills that we're teaching in the classroom. So, a teacher might say, you know, "Today, when we go outside, remember we had talked about inviting others to play? How do we do that? And I'm going to be watching for that today when we're outside." So, we're kind of using it as like a, like a lab setting for the skills that we're teaching in the classroom, and then having kids go out and practice during that time. There are smaller groups of kids outside during those times with their teachers, so it's easy for teachers to be able to really, you know, monitor and, and show kids, you know, help kids and praise kids for doing what they're hoping to see and all of those things. So, that's great. For the second pillar, we are, like everybody, we are implementing the updated district accommodation plan this year. So, that has an impact on our pre-referral process or our student support team process that we have at Chandler, that we have at all four schools, actually. So, we, we're just really working on updating that student support team process and talking to teachers about how that fit, how the D cap fits into that process. We actually presented the new plan to our teachers at our last staff meeting in October. So, we are ready to go with that in mid-October, which is great. For pillar three, we, as you might remember, last year, we had sort of revamped our computer lab to make it more of a, more of just a lab setting with some more interactive items in there. So, we got some robots last year, and we're expanding that again this year. Sarah Milner, our curriculum supervisor, had written a DEF grant and was awarded money to purchase more STEM activities and coding opportunities for kids. So, a lot of robots and things that are appropriate for preschool to grade two, which is wonderful. And we're going to be slowly introducing those to kids and teachers, so that kids have a lot of different opportunities to use some fun tools. And we've, you know, made it, I know Sarah and Rita Marie Benoit have worked together to make sure that the opportunities are different, so they're age-appropriate for us at Chandler, and then they have different things that they can be really excited about when they get here to Alden, because they have some great things also. Many teachers have also adopted this as their professional practice goal, incorporating STEAM activities into their classroom practices. So, that was really exciting to see. I think a lot of teachers looked at their strategic plan and thought like, oh, that's a great way that I can, you know, incorporate some of this stuff, not only into the computer lab, but into their just daily classroom practices, which is exciting. And finally, for me, for pillar four, one of the, you know, ongoing things that we're doing constantly is just evaluating our communication. And this year, as you know, we have a new report card timeline, so that's going to be a big focus for our communication this year. We are working with teachers right now to make sure that parents are informed about what the new process is going to look like, what the new documents are going to look like that are going home midway, in, midway through the term. And we're, you know, developing that with teachers and rolling out the communication of that.
Any questions for me?
I just have to say, yay!
I know!
I'm so excited.
About the recess.
Oh, my gosh.
It's so exciting. I know, we're, we're all so excited. It's great.
It's fantastic. Yes.
You're making learning fun?
Yes.
It's great.
So, the question I had, and I think it's probably for several of you, is the updated district curriculum accommodation plan. Are there any changes in practice that have come about through the updating and, or-
So, I think, I think that, you know, the accommodations that are listed on there are good teaching practices.
Right, okay.
And it's really just giving teachers, you know, permission to use those in the regular classroom setting. But it also is a great way for someone to look through, you know, the checklist of accommodations and say like, oh, that might be something I haven't tried that would be a good match for the student. So, I think it will be really useful. Like I said, we just rolled it out last week. So, I don't know how many teachers have really dug into it yet, but I think it will be a wonderful place for people to look for strategies that they might want to try.
Okay, great.
And if I can piggyback on that, I also think that because it's actually written and going to be put and attached into Aspen to the student, other area teachers are able to see what works in the classroom. And we have not done that in the past. And so, that is nice. It branches out, and, you know, Erin gives me this incredible spreadsheet from second to third grade, as far as what works, what doesn't work. Now, I can go into the student Aspen portal, and I can actually see that on what teachers have been using on certain students. So, that is a different piece that I'm looking forward to, I know that.
Right, exactly. Good communication. Okay.
I think, if I can add, so, our plan for this, for the middle school and high school is actually to tackle this on Friday. So, I think the biggest kind of change in practice will probably be at the secondary level.
Okay.
Where we have not operated with this model in, in the time that I've been in the district.
Really?
So, we're changing pretty much every part of the, every aspect of the program or of the approach. And so, I think the answer to your question is, in the high school, it's probably the biggest area, the biggest programmatic change.
Okay, okay. Great. Maybe it'd be something we could hear about later on in the year.
I'd be glad to present, probably I could invite Heather Tucker and Lisa Dembowski. We worked to revamp the D cap over the summer. We had been using something called Best Practices Manual that was a very long document that had a lot of accommodations and procedures that really wasn't user-friendly for the teachers to be able to access. So, we tried to consolidate a lot of the accommodations and pre-referral strategies, just so that we made it more user-friendly for teachers. And so, the procedures are changing a little bit at each school, so that's why the administrators are going to be rolling out the new processes this year.
Great.
Seeing how everything goes and giving feedback to see if it worked the way we had hoped, and if not, we can make some tweaks. But we can certainly present just an overview of the whole D cap for you at some, further down the road.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add, I shared with the school committee, and it's not apples to apples by any means, but the top-rated schools in the world are in Finland, and they have recess K through 12. So, great at Chandler that they get two, but Alden, middle school, high school, it's beneficial for every student. It's probably beneficial for our faculty as well. So, anyhow, that's what benchmark is. I'm glad we have two in, in Chandler, but more to come, hopefully, down here.
Okay. I hear, I hear you loud and clear. That sounds great!
Finland is really cold, and they're outside. It's outdoor recess. You know, I mean, our kids aren't outside very much. I mean, if you think about where they're going from place to place, being driven indoors, and, you know, they're playing basketball and soccer indoors in the middle of the winter. So, anyhow, just think about that. If you're interested, there's quite a bit of, it's quite radical, but there's quite a bit out there about it, so.
Great.
Thank you.
So, at Alden, so pillar one, social emotional well-being, in examining interpersonal structures and programming and implement insurance to assure that every child is connected with at least one individual adult. I am excited that at Alden, we are going to survey in January each student. I'm going to do it and allow the student, you know, on paper and pencil, to talk about their experiences, and so I can get a pulse on individual classrooms as well as the whole school. And as I'm doing it and the teacher isn't there, hopefully, the students will be very honest, and I will tabulate to see everything that we've been doing around social emotional learning and embedded, embedding it within our curriculum and the school, has it made a difference? How do they feel? And I think it will be, you know, then we can target specific areas. Teachers can target specific goals around how their students are feeling, and I think that's really important. As well as our adjustment counselors have been going in to running morning meeting in classrooms of students they are seeing with high anxiety. So, they make that connection in the classroom, and then when they see them in small group, they can talk about what's happening, and they see that familiar face, which hasn't always happened, and we've made a very concerted effort this year to free them up in the mornings to go into those classrooms. Pillar two, advanced learning opportunities for all students. At Alden, we are prioritizing reading instruction for students with disabilities by providing special education teachers with comprehensive training, and in particular, Orton-Gillingham. We think it's really important that more teachers than just our three reading specialists are certified and trained in these areas, because there are many students with many needs. And if we can service these students in the classroom, as opposed to sending them out upstairs to the second floor, it will make them more comfortable, and it's just another tool for the teacher. So, we're thrilled that we're going to find some funds to be able to do that for professional development and training for our special education teachers. Program expansion, explore ways to provide additional opportunities for students in STEAM, computer science, and programming. We're really utilizing our PTA and community volunteers to staff our makerspace, which is awesome. We're able to allow our students to come in on, you know, it was indoor recess. It's not fun indoor recess in a classroom, but it is a blast at the makerspace. So, we had 75 students and three recesses today, and they get to, you know, they've signed up to go during recess, to go with their teachers, and we're able to service many more students. And what that does is help students with problem-solving. It just gives them an outlet to build, you know, the engineering side of kids comes out in their brains, and it's, it's great to see, and they love it. They love to go in there. Evaluate school-to-home communication to keep parents informed. I think that's the first bullet point under community partnerships. I think we do, we do a good job with that, but I want to make it, we talked at our school council, the Mail Chimp, which is the new program that we were using, I can actually see how many people read the newsletter. And I know, I open it up and make sure, Matt, you've read that. Has he read that? Okay. Who's read it? You know, you get the parent, I did not know you were showing that fifth-grade video. Really, wait one second. You read that in my newsletter on September 17th. I put, but anyways, one of the discussion was, you know, we used to send, I used to do a lot more videos, and so we're going to make an effort this year to do videos on how to read your report card, and we're going to have students talk about, we're going to have the students actually do it, so that parents can open up and we can get more information out through the students. You know, almost like student reporters, but they can click on a link, and it's, it's going to be videos, so it'll be fun. You know, we're, we'll target a few this year. So, any questions?
Does that, Orton-Gillingham training, is that coincide with the regular professional development and those special ed teachers take advantage of it then, or is there another vehicle?
It's, it's another vehicle. There's a lot of time, so we, it would be after school, it could be during the summer. We're looking, right now, we're researching the options of what that would look like.
Oh, good.
And are teachers volunteering for it, or are you suggesting?
Well, we are suggesting, we're starting with our, I'm, I'm hoping that we start with our third and fourth grade teachers, so that, you know, we get them when they come in. There isn't, if I ask for volunteers, I will get 10 sped teachers and 20 non-sped teachers. So, I'm going to target who I think and go approach them first. We have teachers that, you know, it's a very intensive program, but we have many more than 10, which are the special education number that we have, that would want to be trained. So, I am not worried about finding people to get trained.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So, the middle school, we'll just go through these pillars here as well. So, we're continuing to work on our social emotional learning and embedding that into the experience of, of every child. We are working right now in our professional development committee to create a full day of professional development menu offerings to support teachers, have teachers teach other teachers some of the strategies they've used that have been really successful. One of the really exciting things we had just this past faculty meeting was one of our teachers actually received a DEF grant to go be trained by Breathe for Change, which is a group of teachers that, they, they're based out of Boston, I believe, and they offer these trainings for other teachers to implement SEL strategies into the classroom, but with this mindfulness and yoga kind of element to them. And so, this teacher led our faculty meeting through some exposure to some of those strategies and how she's been embedding those into her classroom, which is really exciting. She's also started offering some experiences for students. So, we're gathering kind of the lead, the teacher leaders that are bringing some of that content to our other teachers, which is really great. One of the things we're going to try this year, and it comes from our research in the SEL panorama data that we have from last year, we are going to be pairing up certain students with mentors in the building, and that is really based around the, the belief that- students with mentors in the building and that is really based around the belief that better connectedness to the community results in better outcomes for every student. And so we're starting really with students that we're identifying through that panorama data or through our guidance department as of concern that they don't, maybe aren't making that connection with the adults that they have in their day at school so far. And what's really exciting about that is I kicked it out to my whole staff, including IA's secretaries, custodians, and I've gotten a huge number of volunteers of adults in the building that want to be partnered up with someone. So we're going to be strategic about how we pair people up. But this mentor program is meant to be really adult, an adult who checks in with you and kind of is a friendly face, not someone who's grading you in your homework, but just that kind of connection to school. So I'm excited to put that into place. And I'm sure Jim will touch on this as well, but the other element to our first pillar is to continue to make improvements too and work on our safety protocols. And this Friday, we'll have some professional development for teachers around that in collaboration with the Duxbury Police Department. So that should be good. Advancing learning opportunities for all students. Again, both Karen and Erin talked about our DECAP procedures. We'll be rolling those out the middle school on Friday. And while we've had a set student study team that we've met with at the middle school level, because we're in teams, it really lends itself to using that data all the time and having those conversations. What our focus will be in this process is orienting ourselves to this refined best practices manual, which I think is much more user-friendly than the previous one. And then creating some consistency in how we collect data that supports whether or not the strategies we're using are effective and when to pivot. And so that'll be the focus for the middle school in that professional development on Friday. And then we'll be able to really roll that out and put that into action quickly after that. Program expansion. So the, both the middle and the high school are engaged right now in preparing for our new schedule in a year and we're excited about the opportunities that that brings. And so that's been, a lot of time and effort has already gone into some of those pieces and will continue to be happening in preparation for that. And we're also going to be exploring additional opportunities for students in STEAM programming. Kathy McCarthy, who's the science supervisor, has taken the reins on developing a STEAM celebration night. We're aiming for March for that, which would be really exciting. That comes from not only our new science curriculum with the SEEPUP curriculum that's much more hands-on and project-based and students wanting to showcase their learning. It also comes from some of our population of students that are, have some passion projects that we want to support and give them an opportunity to showcase. And so I'm really excited about having that evening. We also had one of our teachers explore a partnership with Energy Star. Next week, we're going to have them coming in and doing an energy simulation in our gym for all of our seventh graders. So we'll go, one team will go one day and the other team will go the other day. I sort of have a picture in my head of this like bouncy house-like structure with all kinds of data that the students will collect and work with and draw some conclusions with. But again, it's a kind of a real-world, hands-on experience that ties to all of our science curriculum and I think will be one of those things that the kids really remember out of that. So those are just a couple of examples of that programming. And then, like Karen said, we're also using MailChimp. I had a conversation with my school council recently about our communication methods and how effective they are. And we're going to be exploring some ways to connect with families at DMS and make sure that the ways we're reaching out and the types of information we're sharing are meeting folks where they are and what they expect to see. So we'll be doing that. Our social studies department is working on implementing the new frameworks as well. So in eighth grade, this is the first year we have civics as a full-year course in the eighth grade and I am personally extremely jealous of the teachers who get to teach that class. When I first started in eighth grade social studies, we taught half a year of US Gov and I loved it. So I may be hanging out up there a little bit more. But they're, they're hard at work, working with new resources, finding kind of digital free resources that are out there and again, making that come alive in terms of activities and projects that interact with civics in a community scale, which is really exciting.
Great.
That was a lot. What questions can I answer?
Does anybody else have a question?
Well, I'll just comment, the civics piece was covered this weekend in The Globe. There was a lot of, it was an editorial about how we, you know, we lost, we stopped teaching it because it was sort of the race to compete globally to be successful and what that's done to the population and just how Massachusetts is such a leader because we were one of the first states to implement. And I'm thrilled how we're doing it here in Duxbury. So eighth grade is such a fun grade and, you know, the kids, they need to learn it, so.
Will they cover co-equal branches of government? Hopefully.
What are those?
Yeah, great, great.
And then Kath, Amy Scolanti spoke at Open House with the sixth grade and talking about how the, you know, arts is semester and STEM's a semester and now it's STEAM and the art will still be incorporated when they go to the STEM class.
Yes.
So that's what should probably be showcased in that March event.
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Yes, and they've, they've done a lot of work to try to make that a collaborative effort, which has been awesome for our sixth graders who have that kind of dual experience and have, even if you have it one semester and not the other, because it, the way it ties, it's relevant for all the kids the whole time, which is just really great.
Exactly. I love that focus.
All right. Good evening. So just like the other schools, we have that embedding social emotional learning practices, but I thought I'd talk about actually the two other items below in the first pillar. So evaluating adjusting health and wellness offerings. So as we discussed here many times last year, the Health and Wellness Fair is coming this spring. We have our first real planning meeting tomorrow and then we're going to do some more planning on Friday as well. And so we hope to have a full plan to you probably right after January of what the program's going to look like. In collaboration with the police department, we have been working for about the last year on getting some particular type of training called reunification and unified command training in the event of an emergency on-site. We wrote a grant that was not funded last year for that training and so we're looking at ways in which to get that for both the police and school department. For the second pillar, advancing learning opportunities, we have this year for the first time introduced a dedicated options class for math interventions and targeted students into that class. That's a real area for growth, something we'd like to see expand potentially in the new schedule in different ways next year. We also added this year for the first time a true language-based classroom teacher for students at the high school to work primarily with students with language-based disabilities. So that was a new staff position. We kind of changed some staffing around and it's been a very successful since it started this year. So we have, it's a population within our student body that's growing, of students who need that service. And so we have kind of pre-positioned some stuff and we're looking to really grow that service and meet that need for our students. Additionally, in program area, in the pillar three, as Sarah mentioned before, the new schedule. So the new schedule will be a huge change for us as a school and it's just one, it's going to bring an iLab-like class to students three out of every four days. It's going to transform everything from, you know, transition times and lunches and we're going to have, all of our periods will be the same length and duration every day, which is a huge thing right now. We have two different bell schedules during the week and four different lengths of periods, five different lengths of periods. And so we're going, we're going to finally get some consistency back. We'll have more transition time during the day, so kids will actually be transitioning, it'll be almost 25 minutes just walking from class to class during the day. So those are all really good things in addition to the iLab time. So we've started working with staff at the middle school and the high school and really kind of developing ways in which we can build interventions into our school day. It's something we've really struggled with as a school because we schedule kids every minute of the day and we don't schedule a time to get that second dose of anything without pulling them out of something else. So we've created a space and we're starting to really work with teachers to deal with the, develop the mission for how we're going to do it, what the entrance and exit criteria will look like, how we're going to support the kids. And we're very excited about the possibilities. We've been talking about trying to figure out a way to do this forever. And so now we have the opportunity and we are really looking forward to it. In the global learning and community partnerships pillar, like everyone else, we're working on improving our communication. For example, we had about 20% less readership of our newsletter when I sent that out on Monday night than when I sent it out Monday afternoon. And so what is great on the backend of MailChimp is that we get that, that information. So, and we're going to try to experiment putting it a little bit earlier in the day and see if we get a better, a better readership. So, and additionally, we are going to begin, so DHS is up for accreditation in 2023. That's the next time we're scheduled to get our NIESC accreditation. It will at that point have been almost 12 years. Usually it's a decennial accreditation, but NIESC replumbed themselves and stretched out the timeline when they adopted 2020 standards. So part of that as a high school is that you develop, it used to be our core values, please about learning statements. They've changed that to what they call the portrait of a graduate. So we are beginning that process. It is a very similar process to the district's strategic plan goal of developing a vision of a graduate for K-12. So we're going to start to do the legwork. We have really, you know, as I said, probably two years before we need that in place as part of our accreditation or at least making substantial progress towards that. So we're going to start that process. We started a little bit of the legwork last spring and so we're looking to really kind of start to build that out more this fall. And as Sarah said, the changes in the social studies frameworks and how that will look for course sequence at the high school are being discussed now and we'll be back before you soon with some options and then a direction where we think we're going to go.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question about, there's an item here about increasing computer science offerings and potentially hiring a teacher.
Yep.
Is that for just nine through 12 or is it DMS as well? Would that have an impact on computer science at the middle school possibly?
So we are looking at that through the budget.
Okay.
Process and, which will be before you soon.
Right.
So we are looking at ways in which we can do that at the high school and at this point, that's not something that Sarah and I have talked about as being one of those that floats in both buildings.
Right.
But it is going to be a part of the high school budget request.
Okay, okay. Just, all our curriculum subjects are six through 12.
Well, we have, yeah.
Chips are on the budget, just going to see a high school change.
Yeah. I mean, we have, as you know, a number of high school computer science courses.
Right.
But really, they're all online courses.
Right.
And we don't have anyone on staff who's computer science certified.
Exactly.
So that's, that's certainly a priority for us.
Right.
There was a time, we, you know, Duxbury High has a long tradition of having had that as a major program area. And then for, for particular reasons, the program really kind of ceased to function like that.
Right.
And so we've, we cobbled together so that our students had access to what we could provide. But it's really an area for us that, that we don't have a computer science teacher is hugely problematic.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, just a general comment because it, it's, it's really remarkable to see the work that went into the strategic plan that's reflected very simply visually, but very impactfully. And then to have it translated into your individual school improvement plans and I suspect if we had a chance to speak with any of your faculty, they would know exactly what the plan is and how it links back. So years really of effort. Dr. Antonucci, when you came, our strategic plan was sort of at the end of its run. But this, this process was fabulous. So looking at it from my perspective, it ties together, it's very coherent, it's clear, succinct, and really super impactful. So I'm really excited for the work you guys are going to do and how it all ties together to moving our district ahead. So well, well done, all of you. It's really, and the faculty that supported the effort to do the work along with you guys, so. Thank you.
The digital literacy, I know I'm going to get wrapped in the mouth for asking this, but how do you ensure, like I noticed that on three of the four documents, it said, you know, the create and implement digital, the digital literacy plan for the schools. And we have the digital literacy committee that I think was started last, was it last September? September of 18? So how does, how does that work? How does the, what comes out of that digital literacy committee impact what you guys are doing at the school levels around digital literacy throughout the year?
So we had a digital literacy plan that came out of that committee last year.
Yeah.
So within that plan, it's aligned to the strategic plan as well. And so for years, the principals have been working with the staff to determine on those DLCS frameworks, they're separated by grade span, so it's K to 2, 3 to 5, 6 to 8, and 9 to 12. So what we've been working with is each of the content areas to see where on those standards, where are they being addressed and are we missing any? And so the work that we continue to do is to ensure that we have the DLCS standards embedded in our curriculum maps. And so that's a lot of work and that's where instructional literacy coaches would be helpful to help with some of that work, but also some of the...
So is it not going as fast as it otherwise would if we did have those coaches? Because I remember Cheryl, a few weeks ago, she, in her presentation, like it ended with her saying, like, continue to advocate for a digital literacy coach or something.
It would certainly help. And I think that we're doing a lot with the standards right now, but we definitely could be doing more. And we have a lot of great resources that we've received through grant funding that we would be able to utilize even more, in a more widespread manner, instead of having pockets of excellence in terms of that instructional technology, that would be happening more widespread across the district. So I think, I think we're working on it and it's, it's a work in progress, but we only have so many professional days to work on that sort of thing. So we have to spread out what we're working on so that everything gets touched during the year. So it's a year-by-year effort and we continue to see increases in our implementation of the DLCS standards.
Okay.
Does that make, do you agree? I want to speak for all of you.
And then just to, just to add to the question that Julie asked about computer science. So as it happens, just a lot of the work that I've been doing lately for my work, I've been working with a lot of companies that have been doing research around computer science and particularly the lack of it in middle school. And there's like a lot of research out there, I think, that suggests that if kids don't get that exposure to computer science, like by the sixth grade, they miss sort of a real window of opportunity. And there's some research to suggest that that's one of the reasons why, for example, we don't see a lot of like females in STEM, you know, professionally, because they miss that critical window in sixth grade. So I just wonder if there's, you know, been any discussion or if there's an opportunity to have some discussion around trying to introduce computer science at even a younger grade level at high school.
We do introduce it a little bit, quite a bit actually, Kathy Shay's class, right?
Yeah, so in the STEM course that we have, there's elements to it. But I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Ideally, we would be able to offer more components of a computer science course at the middle school level. Right now, the challenge is around where that comes from, where the time for that comes from in the kid's schedule.
And who's qualified? The other thing I've heard is that like, you know, schools of education, they're not churning out a ton of teachers who are qualified to teach computer science. The other stuff, yes.
Right, right. It's kind of a niche license for sure, but we do incorporate as much as we can into the STEM experience for kids. And additionally, with our new elective operation exploration, we've tried to tie in some other elements to that experience for kids that opt into that course. That was new this year. We have two sections running of it and it's included a whole kind of variety of topics, including some personal finance, some computer science, a little bit of coding, a little bit of kind of math elements, structure to it, all in kind of a project-based experience. And I'm excited about that class, but I do agree, I think we need to continue to push for more of those experiences for our kids.
Yeah, okay. Cool. Thanks.
Yeah, we're good.
I'm satisfied.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation.
So, yeah, these guys, Jim and Sarah are going to stay and kind of segue right into the next big item.
Yeah.
I'll sit in the audience. My friend.
It's me first. All right. Sorry, guys. So what I have projected...
It's me first, all right, sorry, guys. So what I have projected here is just a summary based on the middle school YRBS data. And you have the whole presentation already in hand, but I wanted to highlight a couple of points and just give a little bit of context briefly. So last year, last May, we administered the YRBS survey to all seventh and eighth graders, which ended up being about 463 students at the middle school. That was actually 99% of all the seventh and eighth graders, so really representative group. In the last administration of the YRBS this past May, we chose not to include sixth grade in that survey group. The reason being that we had also surveyed the students through Panorama and felt that that data was giving us relevant and and related data for that age group with question types that we thought matched that age group a little bit better. So we made that decision this time around. And the data really brought for me two kind of concern areas. The first concern was around, and I think this is consistent with middle schools across the country right now, around vaping and e-cigarette use. And, you know, the the context in the state right now is, I mean, it's all over the place. People are talking about it, the ban and all those things. So it's certainly a concern of mine that we continue to provide students with education about the risk factors related to vaping and that we work to partner with families to support them and helping to have those conversations with kids at the middle school age. And so that's definitely a concern item for me based on that data. Additionally, the other big pieces around mental health. And so that informs part of what I just spoke about with the school improvement plan and that mentor program, but really looking to make sure that we have strong connectedness for all of our students and that we are ensuring that they have access to resources, that we're effectively identifying kids and getting them connected to those resources and that we're supporting families as they're trying to support their kids through what could be potentially some challenging experiences. So those were my two areas of concern. And so the priorities around that become, you know, our new schedule. There's opportunity for intervention that can really support that mental health and connectedness piece, creating some spaces, as I think how Jim put it, to allow for better access to guidance and our resources in school. And just a little space with a little less rigorous scheduling in that very moment, just to give kids a chance to breathe for a minute. We're continuing to look at opportunities for for kids with mindset and wellness. I talked a little bit about that before. So one of our teachers is bringing in yoga free of charge for our students in the building, which is exciting, and incorporating those SEL strategies into the classroom experience, which I'm excited about. We hope to continue to partner to create educational experiences for families. So last year, we were able to have a speaker come in from Karen who talked about vaping specifically. And we're able to kind of show families, what did devices look like? What do I even look for? How would somebody get one? And so we we want to continue to provide some of those resources to our community. So we're partnered in in helping make sure our kids are away from these items. And then again, continuing with that SEL focus, I think it's very supportive of the mental health piece. We'll continue with the Panorama surveying to target some of those areas of need for our students. I think the mentor program will be really great to start to partner kids with adults in the building. And we're continuing to look for ways to develop that connectedness to our community through engaging student voice. So this year, we have a theme that the kids helped pick. It's choose kind. I'm really excited that that's the the theme this year. We're going to be tying it to an assembly a little bit later in the year where we have a group coming in and talking about kindness and kind of challenging kids to engage with each other in their community with that. My principal's advisory met today, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And they really want to tie all of our events explicitly to choose kind and challenge kids on a daily basis to opt into that theme. And so I think those are ways that really will support the mental health and connectedness concerns that we have out of the YRBS data.
I know you've got to be sensitive with what you chair and everything, but are you seeing like vaping? I mean, is vaping an issue?
I'm concerned about it.
Yeah. Are you concerned about it because you're seeing kids vape? Or are you concerned about it because?
Yeah, I think I think, yes. And I think what's interesting, so I don't want to get ahead of Jim's presentation, but one of the questions that exists in the high school survey that I'm interested in adding to a potential middle school survey is they do a little bit of social norming questioning in the high school survey about actual behavior and perceived behavior. We don't have questions in the middle school survey about perceived behavior. Actual behavior numbers and perceived, I would bet, have a similar disparity as the high school ones do. So the scale of the problem, I don't think is drastic, but any
Yeah.
of it is too much for me, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And so it's of concern for me.
And on the high school side, Sarah and I made a presentation to our School Wellness Advisory Council, I think about a week and a half ago on this. And they're going to go through the the full document with all the cross tabs and start to ask additional questions. And we're going to work with them on that. This information, the survey is also going to be a part of what drives our Wellness Fair for PE. So the big concern areas that I have is first, obviously vaping and e-cigarettes. This is not a new issue at the high school. For as long as I've been an assistant principal, we've had students who have engaged in vaping during the school day. I think what we are going to be fortunate for in a year or two is that we will have finally, all the research will have caught up, will know what's happening, and kids will be able to say that. No, right at the outset, it's just terrible to do. Unfortunately, there is definitely a group of kids who are going to be kind of stuck in the middle where there was not enough research and there was access and they could get it. And so we are, we've had a number of students, obviously, who have, we've had to work with during the school day when they've had vapes or had, you know, material on them. And we're also working to support families and to support the kids and as they try to move away from that. Substance misuse and abuse rates are fairly flat. So we are, we have YRBS data going back to 2005. In that 15-year period, all of our rates of, you know, students who have have improved, right? Students who have never used alcohol, students who have never used marijuana, students who have never used tobacco, students who have never used a prescription drug without a doctor's order, with the exception of vaping. So that's great. Over the last six years or so, they really haven't changed. The same is true for mental health. Our numbers are fairly flat over the last six to eight years as far as students reporting, you know, excessive use of excessive anxiety for more than two weeks in a 30-day period. So however, in that time, we've put a lot of effort into supporting students and supporting families and addressing that head on and create, including creating programs like Stress Lesson Breathe Out, which have evolved now into balanced student council. Took on this year, it's going to be one day a month as opposed to four days in March. And we're going to try to make it part of our monthly programming as a school. The first one actually is tomorrow, Be Involved, the Wellness Fair. Schedule change is going to provide us a huge access for guidance services. So one of the big things that we have now is anytime a student has to come out of class to do everything from meet with a school psychologist to have a post-secondary meeting about college applications, it all comes out of class time. Unless a student is able to schedule during their 24-minute lunch period. Having, especially for juniors and seniors, the research we're doing in reviewing research as a part of the schedule change and what interventions look like, the research in the publications say you need to let 11th and 12th grade be for the transition beyond high school. And allowing them access to guidance is a huge thing. It's a huge stress for our families. We're starting to see, you know, we have a lot of oldest kids, first families, going through the post-secondary process, going to college. It's new for a lot of people. We actually had, Mrs. Stambowski ran a, in that vein, ran a like how to apply to college night for parents. We had 80 parents, which is 25% of our senior class. That's the most we've had at a night for anything in years. So we're really happy about that. We think our parents are starting to recognize some of the opportunities we have and are starting to access them. And then again, with vaping, the initial, you know, there's some great public health. Fax actually has a night that we're working with them on in, I think, October 22nd, where they're going to have a simulator for what it's like to drive under the influence of marijuana, where kids can kind of experience that. They're going to have a great program with two clinicians who work with young adults who use substances. One of them is fantastic, I forget her name, but I've seen her at the social hospitals consortium that they do every year. They'll be great. A lot of the materials from the Surgeon General's Office and and other large public health organizations haven't been there. They've been kind of the large like scare tactic posters without much science behind it or without really strong messaging. And we haven't really had great stuff to use. We had a parent night last year with Karen where we put out all the stuff we've confiscated. We're actually going to do that again on the 22nd. And so we're just going to continue to to make ourselves available into everything we have and that we get access to. We think is good a resource of parents, we're going to distribute. And we're going to continue to try to make, from a programming perspective, a lot of the programs that we've had, we think are making a difference and we want to find ways for them to grow. We're not interested at this point at finding something else and bringing something else in because our students are using it. They're coming to guidance and they're asking for help. They're coming to guidance and asking to meet with a school psychologist because they don't know what to do. They're seeking out other kids in the building. We have, as you know, the the TIP Now service and the, what's it called? Securly, I try to block it out there. I always forget that name because it emails me 12 times a day. But kids are reaching out on behalf of other kids because they're concerned. So all these tools that we've made available to them, they're really starting to use. And we want to continue to support them and support students through them.
Yeah, I have just a question about Duxbury State National Cigarette Alcohol Long-Term Decline. That's leveled off or continued, would you say?
Yeah, so our our rates of, so for example, alcohol free for life, in 2015, 43% of our students said that. In 2017, 50%, and 2019, 46%. We are at or below state average in all but one category, which I don't remember offhand. But our numbers haven't really changed.
Right, but as I remember the, you know, a couple of things external to Duxbury, legalization of marijuana, accessibility to marijuana, and also vaping of THC. Like, what are you seeing there? That was growing before all of those innovations. Has the growth accelerated? Is the growth continuing? And again, I didn't look at the detailed data, so I apologize. But just your experience and other high school principals you're talking with, is that something that you're seeing more of? What do you say, relative to five years ago, given those two changes?
Yes, so two parts to that. Our rates, the rates of use in the YRBS, so we collect the YRBS data. We had 92% of the high school, which is great. A couple of years ago, we had, I think we were in the mid 70s for completion rate. We send that survey out to be analyzed and then we get the data back. So some of the outliers are already taken out. I expected that number to be higher than it was. It was fairly flat from two years ago, which surprised me, honestly. I actually thought we would have a higher rate of using usage for e-cigarettes and and vapes because it's two years later and there's still so much accessible. There was, you know, it was just so accessible. I think we are seeing more, we are seeing different marijuana usage than we saw before. So when I became an assistant principal at the high school, we only saw actual marijuana, you know, the leafy marijuana. And the the usage was consistent with how you would, you know, how you would smoke that, you know, for lack of a better phrase. Now, I mean, I haven't seen a student with actual marijuana in years. So the the when we encounter it during the school day, where we are finding it in vapes, the police department comes and does a field test and that's how we know. But it is, the usage has changed. But but what I'm surprised at is statistically, it hasn't. And I can't explain that. All right, thank you.
Now we have Mrs. Tucker to give us a report on the dyslexia committee. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Heather, do you want to project or do you want me to?
If you would, because I don't have an airdrop. Thank you. Good evening, thank you for having me. This is kind of an exciting presentation and to be able to present this to you folks. So a little bit about what brought about the dyslexia screening committee. I started Duxbury Public Schools on October 1st of last year. So in my time, when we, when I first came on board, was right around when the legislation was accepted and passed in order for schools to look at that pre-screening, early identification of students with dyslexia. So when I came on board, I had said to Dr. Klingerman, you know, we've got all these great committees. I think we need a dyslexia screening committee put into place kind of ASAP. And we did that because we really wanted to look at what are our practices around early identification? How are we identifying students? What are we doing with the information? What kind of information do we already have? So we put that together, put out a bunch of teachers to try and participate. So I guess we'll start a little bit with what is dyslexia? And so dyslexia is a specific learning disability that is neurobiological in order, in origin. And it's characterized by difficulties with accurate and or fluent word recognition and by poor spelling and decoding abilities. These difficulties typically result in a deficit in the phonological component of the language that is often unexpected in relation to other cognitive abilities and provision of effective classroom services. Some secondary consequences come with reading comprehension, reduced reading experience that can impede growth of vocabulary and background knowledge. So a sort of a summary of that is students lack the phonological awareness processing, even though they are cognitively able to learn. So when we look at evaluating students, we look at what is their potential? And are they in the classroom achieving to the potential that you would expect? And it is related to that decoding and how you're approaching your word attack skills in order to be able to read at that type of level. This, and when you're not a fluent reader, it does impact your comprehension and other pieces. So that's where it comes to some of that secondary. In the legislation, there is both federal and state regulations. So in September of 2016, it designated October 2016 National Dyslexia Awareness Month. And we were, there was the call to action for educational agencies, schools to recognize that dyslexia has a significant educational impact that needs to be addressed. And then October 19th of 2018, DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and partnered with EEC, so those are the, that's the younger branch of education that looks at students, you know, around that three to five range, issued guidelines to assist districts in developing screening procedures or protocols to demonstrate one or more potential indicators of that neurological learning disability, including but not limited to dyslexia. So as we've talked about our dyslexia screening committee, we're looking at students with reading disabilities as well as students with targeted dyslexia. So we pulled together this committee, you know, it was right at that time that the, so we, myself and Dr. Klingerman co-chair this. I would say over time, 30 educators come in. And I'd say we probably have a solid 15 that have attended, a core 15 that have attended every meeting. Now, we started last year. Some people were able to come to one, some people were able to come to two, you know. And then, this year, there were a few people who said, I'm not able to make that commitment again. Or there were other people who said, wow, I really heard what you did last year and I'm here to join. So, we have had reading specialists present from Chandler, Alden, and the secondary level. We have had special education teachers from Chandler, Alden, middle school and high school. We have had the elementary curriculum supervisors. So, that would be Reebe Noyt and that would be Sarah Milner. We have had speech pathologists, starting with preschool, our preschool speech pathologist, the preschool coordinator has attended. She's also the school psychologist for the preschool, all the way up to, you know, we've had the speech pathologist for the secondary. We've had high school special education teachers, the new language-based teacher from the high school. So, we really have had a really robust, oh, we've had kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers. So, I really feel like we've had a really robust group, which has really led to a really enriched discussion. Because when people are looking at things, they're thinking about it with their different lens. And it's really important to see what is a general education, first grade teacher thinking about in comparison to what the secondary speech pathologist is thinking about and what does that mean? And, you know, we've had a lot of really nice discussions around that. So, we developed the committee in order to have a certain set of goals. We wanted to review the district practices related to reading services. We wanted to identify the assessment tools currently in place at the elementary and secondary levels. We wanted to determine if different or additional assessments are needed by the district. We wanted to make a plan for implementing a specific dyslexia screening tool and make recommendations for a pilot. We wanted to identify and provide professional training to pre-K to 12 teachers and best practices in teaching, reading, and training on analysis and interpretation of dyslexia screening results and, you know, the other evaluation tools that we're using. So, that was our goal coming out of the gate in October of 2018. The committee's process has been, we really talked about what is the federal definition of dyslexia. We refer to the DESI MTSS. So, that's the multi-tiered system of supports. And with that, DESI provides some guidance on how we should go about looking at student supports in, across levels vertically and how are we supporting students through the different tiers and levels of need. But they also provided a quick reference guide for specific learning disabilities within that tiered system of supports. We looked at the Office of Special Education Process and Policy, Planning and Policy, and they had offered, they issued what's called a Dear Colleague Letter. That year, I think they issued like 10 Dear Colleague Letters. But one of them was related to that dyslexia guidance. And that partnered with our legislation being passed. So, from there, we really wanted to identify the practices currently the district uses to assess early indicators and the components of literacy. We also reviewed previous evaluations of the district's reading services and review of the current reading instruction for students both with and without disabilities. And it's important for us to look at what are our practices prior to students being eligible for special education because the whole purpose is to catch students who are, and to screen students to get that early intervention as soon as possible. We went through different categories of our, different areas of reading. We looked at vocabulary, phonemic awareness, comprehension. How are we assessing those? What things do we have in place? We looked at our STAR reading, our EAMS Web. Our EAMS Web looks at oral reading fluency. Who's administering that? Who's doing the error analysis to identify what kinds of mistakes students are making? We looked at what are things that we notice at a preschool level. One of the things we notice when you're looking to break a word apart into the different pieces in order to be able to decode that word, actually one of the early indicators is one-to-one correspondence. Does a student know, when you give a group of objects, to be able to count one object, two object, three object, four object? Because you're able to break that set into those pieces. So, that's where we talked a little bit about what's happening at that preschool, kindergarten level and bringing all of that together. So, those we went through as a group and all those different levels to see what do we have and what are we doing? And, you know, Chandler has taken on Foundations, which is a phonics-based curriculum instruction program. Right now, the Alden is using what's called Words Their Way. It's another word attack program. So, we're looking at what kinds of, what kind of errors are students making? When we're providing this direct instruction in that tier one, which is your general education and students are not being as successful, what are we doing for that tier two? How are they getting that double dose? What's happening in the classroom? When do we look to, and this is where the real good excitement with the district curriculum accommodation plan is, because that's helping us to identify, what are we doing in tier two? What we don't want is students to be stuck in that student support team process. We want to do really robust data collection to see if the interventions are working or not working. And if students aren't responding to interventions, we need to go to another tier to provide more intensive supports, services, evaluations, things like that. So, if you kind of want to go to the next, we developed an action plan of where did some of the information? Because it's really great to collect information, but if you're not taking it and turning it into an action plan for follow-through, where does it go? So, I think one of the, perfect, I probably couldn't have planned it any better, was the development of the strategic plan as we're going through, looking at our reading services, how are we going about a screening process? What does that look like? We identified in the pillars that we want to be able to train every special education teacher in Orton Gillingham. And the reason is, it doesn't mean that we're not going to take students in small groups and work their way step by step through the program. But what it helps in this amazing co-teach model that we have here in district is as the teacher is working with the student in the classroom, they're able to say, hold on a minute, what was that sound? Tap it out. And they're providing that ongoing intervention just through the natural, the natural environment of the classroom. We are looking at professional development. So, for us, I thought it was really important that where this is a neurobiological disorder, we have, on Friday, the special education teachers, elementary in one group, secondary in the second, are actually getting the neurobiology and neuroscience of dyslexia and co-occurring disorders within the classroom. And Dr. Gina Ficelli, Mass General Hospital, has this amazing program. It's called the LEAP program. It's the Language and Emotional Assessment Program. And it was developed, I don't know, I've been in this for a while. It was developed quite a few years ago by Dr. Nathan Doty, who's actually coming to work with us as well. So, Dr. Doty and Dr. Brian Willoughby developed this language enhancement program and have then since gone on to their own private practice. But Dr. Ficelli is a Harvard professor who is training the doctoral-level students through the language enhancement program. And she's coming in to dig deep with what is this neurobiological process? How is it impacting students with a focus on dyslexia specifically? So, that way, our teachers really have a deep understanding of what this learning disability is and how are we going about that. And then, the follow-up is going to have Dr. Doty, the neuropsychologist, to actually get into what our evaluations are and how are we using those evaluation tools to really drill down, dig deep, what is that cognitive process that's impacted? And how are we targeting our interventions to support that student, which should also lead into our IEP goal and development. We're doing that at Orton Gillingham. So, right now, Dr. Klingerman and I have probably reached out to, I think, four different individual companies to see who is coming to do OG training. OG training is expensive. It's probably about $3,500 per teacher just for the training, not to say even paying for the teacher to come to participate in the training. The training is extremely intensive. It is anywhere between a 30 and 40 contact hour in a classroom with the instructor, followed by a 100-hour practicum, working with either one student or two students in a one-on-one, 60 minutes to be able to. And so, the teachers will have to provide lesson plans ahead of time for that individual student. The professors will go through those lesson plans, provide feedback, and then they will have to do that targeted intervention. So, it really is quite a time-intensive. Dr. Klingerman and I are actually working on how to go about, who can we train right now? And as, you know, Principal Whitaker was saying, we've got people banging down the door, can I be trained? I want to be trained. And we are really looking at, okay, how are we going to go about this? We're looking at, can we do after-school training? Can we do in the summer? Things like that. The other thing is, we want to make sure that we are actively screening students K through 2 without a doubt. So, we've actually identified one, and I think we're looking at potentially a second screener. And our goal would be in January of this year to actually screen all of the students K through 2 to do that dyslexia screening. And then, we would want to set up screening timelines, training for staff, so that way it will be in place. As of fall of next year, we will have our well-articulated plan. But the goal right now is for January because we do those benchmark assessments three times a year anyway. The other part was our dyslexia screening committee. Talked a lot about that there are early indicators and there is a genetic component to this. There is a piece that students, you know, a hereditary piece. And we wanted to look at, how are we able to gain information from parents with their students' development? Was your child able to rhyme and follow nursery rhymes at, you know, the three-year-old level? Were they, is it hereditary? Do you have somebody in your family? So, we've actually have a drafted questionnaire. We just, in the dyslexia screening committee, kind of pulled a whole bunch of resources, what we wanted. I wrote it this summer. We looked at it. We only have a couple tweaks or two, but we would like to implement that with our registration packet and process. So, we already have information as students enter the district on things that could be potential red flags for us to be able to monitor students more closely. And we also are going to be issuing this as part of our initial evaluations. And then, we are also implemented as part of our hiring practices that we are going to hire special education staff who already possess that phonemic reading certification. So, I think through the D cap and us looking at how are we bringing students, how are we identifying students with a database system? We are doing the dyslexia screening on all students K through 2. You know, we are piloting the program and rolling it out. We've connected it to professional development. We've connected this to the strategic plan. We've actually done quite more than I was expecting. This is just really exciting and people are just really impassioned about it, which is wonderful. Just some additional action items. Just to be aware that as part of this, Chandler is in year three in the implementation of the Foundations Phonics Program, which is direct instruction in that phonological processes. Alden 2, Alden, there are two grade-three teachers because one of the things, Words Their Way. It goes from second grade to fifth grade. And Foundations goes from kindergarten to third grade. We have a little bit of overlap. We're looking to actually see which program may make most sense for the third grade. We have committed to, by the district, to provide professional development reading for teachers pre-K through 12. So, that's all special and general education, reading teachers. And so, we're working on what does our professional development committee going to look like for the other individuals outside of special education? It was wonderful. Rita Marie presented to the CPAC last night on a, with her DEF grant. She did a professional development at the end of June on just reading, reading implementation, reading strategies for students who are challenged readers and what can we do to drill down. And then, we've met for our dyslexia screening committee once already and we've got another meeting in the books. And we are looking to actively have that screening tool pilot for January.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
How unusual is it not to have a screening tool in place now? Like, do other districts around have screening tools?
So, right now, there are things that are in place to catch students and that are markers for students who are having challenges. For example, we do that benchmark testing three times a year. We use our SWAT teams to go out. And what it is, is you're listening to students read and you're identifying those errors and you're doing that error analysis. So, we do have evaluations and screenings happening. But under this, there is a specific dyslexia screening tool which complements the work that we're already doing. So, because it came out in the legislation that we need a dyslexia-specific, all districts are in the same place. Some may be a few months ahead of implementing their pilot for screening tool. Some are not there yet. So...
And is the tool, I just Googled it and I just got a bunch of, I mean, I just, dyslexia screening tool.
Yes.
But what, what, what is the tool? Like, is it some, how is the tool?
So, there are different companies are doing different things. And I think that's part of what our pilot is, is there are some screeners that are more of a rating scale. Some screeners that are having students, similar to what our SWAT process already is, is having an adult sit with a child as they're going through different activities to see how they're performing. And then, what does that intervention mean? What does that flag look like? And then, we compile that also, though I think it's important to pull that all together with what's happening in the classroom. What are we seeing? What are we doing? But different tools have different pieces.
And once you choose one, or of some, I guess, do you, will that be an indefinite sort of implementation?
No, I think, right now, we use EAMS Web for, one of our screening tools. And EAMS Web has a dyslexia screening tool through the SheaWits, which is a pretty popular dyslexia screener. So, we'll likely use that for our pilot since the teachers are familiar with the EAMS Web platform already, rather than having to learn an entire new platform. And so, that's a pretty well-used dyslexia screening tool. So, we'll probably start there since it wouldn't be a whole nother program that we'd have to provide training on another platform.
So, when we start to use it, then we use it on a yearly basis?
We'll use it, we'll use it probably in the winter and spring benchmark testing. And then, our dyslexia committee will seek feedback from the teaching staff. Is the ease of use? Did we get good data from it? Did it identify different students as at risk that we were missing through our other screening tools? Was it cumbersome to administer? Was it very subjective? So, there's a lot of questions that we need to ask. And if we find that that isn't the right tool for us, we're committed to continue to provide a dyslexia screening tool for our students. So, we'll investigate others that maybe other districts have had more success with. But this is still beginning stages for a lot of districts right now. So, we're probably going to start with that one because it's the most commonly used tool that we've come across.
And what's the objective of the screening? Is it to identify the specific difficulties that the child is experiencing? Or is it to identify whether they are dyslexic? Is it a label or is it analytical?
So, what we want to be able to do is to identify the students who have those red flags and hall markers of dyslexia. So, we know to provide interventions and to possibly do further and more in-depth evaluations to see what other supports, services, interventions those students need. Because what we, what was happening and what people don't want to happen is a student end up in fourth grade and they're still not able to read and people haven't picked that out.
Right.
Because the earlier you intervene, the greater success you have to build a solid, strong reader. And so, our goal is to find students, young, to provide them those interventions at the most critical time.
But to diagnose though? Are you diagnosing?
So, schools don't diagnose. That's a medical diagnosis. So, schools wouldn't diagnose dyslexia, but we would be able to identify students who have a specific learning disability at an earlier time and to provide a deeper level of intervention sooner.
Okay.
And there is some guidance from DESI, but it hasn't come out with a action plan. So, I think actually DESI is in a place where they're looking at the special education eligibility categories. And I foresee some changes where specific learning disability in reading will hallmark dyslexia specifically. But dyslexia is one reading disability and specific learning disability encompasses a more broad challenge with reading. So, it is a piece of...
I have a couple comments too.
Yeah.
So, I'm thrilled with the strides we're making. This is really incredible news for the dyslexia community. If I were a betting woman, I would probably guarantee there are students in Alden and middle school that were never diagnosed. So, will we plan on trying to push the screening up? So, will we plan on trying to push the screening up, or is there...
So, it's actually, that's, that, on the agenda for the next Dyslexia Screening Committee, because we've been working close with our reading specialist at the secondary of, how do we make sure we are catching students in the upper grades who may not be caught as part of this original screening process? And that's why we're making sure that secondary teachers, special education professionals, are participating in this professional development, to help them look, what to look for within the classrooms, what to look for when they're working with students. And we have to talk more about that, but that's a targeted agenda item, to catch the kids that may have slipped through the cracks, especially at this point in time.
Right. And then, do you know, is there any data, and I don't know if there is or isn't? You know, years ago, my twenty-year-old, when kids were in elementary school, they didn't all have to read in kindergarten, right? So, some kids learned to read in first grade. Is there any data about dyslexia or reading issues or comprehend, you know, would the push to make kids at a younger age, when it's not developmentally appropriate, we're going to have to read by the end of kindergarten, so we can all go to Harvard?
So, I think what we want to do at that younger age is, we want to be able to look at, who are the students that, when we drill down and look at the data, it's not, it's not just developmental of, you know, maybe you're a June birthday kid who's a little slower. It is, there are actual critical things that your child is not, your student's not able to do, even at that developmental, within that developmental range. Because that lets us know that this is a student need to watch, monitor, provide intervention, and dig deeper into support. So, that's where we are talking about things, like even that one-to-one correspondence. How about students being able to rhyme? How about students being able to manipulate words, sounds, in their mind, using letter tiles? Things that are all developmentally appropriate at a kindergarten, first-grade level? But, some of that, it's, and it's to turn the teachers in to realize and understand. But, through the screening, it also pops students as a flag, so the teachers are also looking, who do we need to pay attention to? And it pulls everything together.
And then, I guess, I just have a comment. We spend a lot of time, school improvement plans, everything, talking about mental health of our students. And I think students who enter the special education department, whether it's on an IEP or 504, you know, I think they're a vulnerable community, and we need to be really careful of their mental health. You know, part of it is like an organization piece for them. I know at the middle school, high school, we use Schoology, but every teacher can use a different thing. And, you know, I'd like to see some more, maybe cohesive effort on how to help these students, once they're identified, navigate school, Alden through high school, with as many supports as possible, if that makes sense. Just some more consistency.
Okay.
No, you go.
Well, with, what's your, what's your practice with, in informing parents around what information you're gathering from students who are being, well, now they're being assessed, but you're proposing screening them? What, how do you educate parents about what you are finding?
So, I think there are some different ways that we can go about informing parents, especially if we have areas of concerns. And I think that some of the big starts come with that classroom teacher, and that level of communication that happens with, you know, we're working with your child, we, you know, we have a few red flags, can we talk about this? Can you come in and meet with us? That may, if some of these red flags may trigger that student support team, that SST process of, you know, we want to look at putting some interventions in with your child. And when students are being brought to SST, there is a level of communication with families of, we want to do these interventions for this short period of time, to see how your child responds to those. And that's, so, parents are brought in at that level. And it's really that individualized communication with families. You know, it's not going to be a broadcast level of, hey, we did the screening, and, you know, you're going to, it, but there does need to be some of that conversation, communication. You know, we're a little concerned with your child. What are you seeing? Are you seeing this, too? Okay. You know, this is what we want to do, and this is our first plan of attack.
And do you provide support for parents who perhaps want to do some supplemental work at home with their child, to help them?
Yes, we love to have parents be that active, involved at home. And I know, well, that's really important to me, just in my special education lens of, if you're using this graphic organizer in school, make sure it goes home, so parents have a copy. If you're using this behavior plan with a series of visuals, make sure that goes home, so parents can follow through. Here's the language that we're using when we're, you know, teaching some of the middle school students about their body and safety. You know, here's the language we're using. Here's what we want you to follow through. So, same thing with literacy activities, for parents to be able to say, hey, if you're following up, or when you're reading at night with your child, do this. You know, I think there's a big partnership that goes on. And nothing, I think, sometimes is more upsetting to us as educators, is when we did homework last night, it took us an hour, there were tears, people were on the floor, and it was me. You know, like, we don't want that for families. So, if things are hard, communicate with your teacher, reach out, because we don't know some of those things are happening, if it's not communicated to us. But, we want to share that interactive, here's a game for you to take home and practice. Here's a just-write book for you to go and read with your child.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, you know, this is, this is a very general comment, but we, you know, following on the meeting that we had this morning, which is looking forward to the resource requirements in the school. Everyone has received an education. And yet, we're talking about things that are completely foreign to most of us that went through primary and secondary school in our lifetimes. But, we're talking about unfunded mandates. So, this is another requirement on the school. But, it's also an incredible opportunity to prepare the children of Duxbury to be successful in life. So, if we have to screen, if we don't follow that up with the investment to provide the resources to make effective intervention, are we really, are we really doing our students service? And we talked about the need for computer science. None of us had computer science in primary or secondary school. There's a mental health crisis in higher education, in secondary education. And unfortunately, it's probably migrating into primary education. That wasn't, all of us didn't live with that, in the way that you live with it today, with our students and educators in higher ed, are, are learning, you know, are living with in the way that they didn't live with it a generation ago. But, the social-emotional learning, mandated dyslexia screening, and then the desire to have effective intervention, the need to enhance the well-being of our students and the preparedness of our students. These things don't all come at a level-service budget, and certainly not at a budget which has been declining relative to level services over time. So, somehow, in a simple and clear way, most people don't really understand. We have the benefit, as non-educators, to have a window into your world. But, one, most people don't really recognize how different the role is of educators, what the challenges are, and also what the requirements are. So, I just think we have to make that message heard. And I believe the community will want to provide effective support for those students that we diagnosed earlier, as a result of the state mandate. But, we need the resource to be able to make that happen. So, I just, I know we're in a budget environment where we're being asked to prepare a 2.25% increase relative to last year's budget. Well, we've averaged 2.7, and we're falling behind. So, I just think this is an example that we just have to articulate as best we can. The demands on our schools are not different than all of us experienced when we were students, high school, middle school, elementary school. It's just different. So, a lot more responsibility, great opportunities, though. I mean, we can really provide our students with great opportunities, be successful in life. So, but we have to have the capacity to follow through. So, that's, I'm off my soapbox here. But, it's just, you know, we're talking about budgets.
I was wondering if you were going to get on one.
Well, but, it's like, what's the good of a screening if we don't have the follow-through? I mean, I think really that's the whole point. Great, but we need to be able to really effectively follow through. And I think all of us would agree, and certainly the evidence would support, early intervention is going to have the biggest positive impact for society, not just our students, but for society at large. It's the best investment we could make.
Correct.
So...
Yeah.
It's a call to action here. We have to do it. We have to come through. You know, we really do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, last, last item is school committee goals, which I circulated to everybody earlier. I didn't give you, do I give them? You have it? Okay. If you want. But, did everybody have a chance to read that amendment? Any further amendments? So, our leadership goals are to support the implementation of the strategic plan, to work with the town and the community to develop the funding, as Peter was just saying, to meet the needs of the district going forward, to work with the administration in refining processes and reporting, so that we can monitor and evaluate on the effectiveness of the district, and that to review district policies in line with best practices. Which is actually something you mentioned to me earlier, that we were going to do a policy review.
Yeah, I'm just making a note, someone owes me a phone call, yeah, yeah.
Right. So, MASC, am I right?
Yeah.
We'll come in and review all our policies, and identify which policies are, need to be updated, brought into line with their recommended policies.
We actually did it six years ago, so it probably doesn't need a full, full review, is what they told me. But, they, they were supposed, they were going to review, we sent them all our policies, they were going to review, and then maybe start kind of a more, a stream, more streamlined process, so.
Okay. So, we'll probably come back to various policies with new wording and changes later in the year as they emerge from this research. And then, as far as communication goes, we're pretty much continuing our goal of communicating and engaging with the community. And the only changes I made there were grammatical ones, because I got, became an English teacher briefly, and decided I needed to change the wording. And then, professional development, you know, we hope that everybody has an opportunity to access some kind of professional development for school committee members at some point during the year. So, any other, any feedback? Are we happy to approve them? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve our school committee goals for 2019, 2020?
Motion to approve the school committee goals for 2019, 2020.
Great. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you very much. So, these will get posted to the, can we put them on the district website?
Sure.
Because the old ones are there, so if we could just replace the old ones, that would be great. Okay. Any other action items that you needed from us? There's an opportunity for public comment now at the end, any, sure.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Gillis. And first, let me start by thanking Heather Tucker for presenting tonight on the work, and Dr. Klingman, the work the Dyslexia Committee has done. I've lived in town for a really long time, maybe twenty years. And my oldest is going to be seventeen next month. And my fourteen-year-old is dyslexic. And I have never been in the presence of so many people dedicated to this one topic. So, it means the world to me, and a few people behind me, that you're willing to do it. So, thank you very much. So, a couple things, and I'm doing this without notes, and I'll try to be brief, because I know people probably want to go home. I want to reiterate how important it is that we're focused on this, because one of the pillars of the strategic plan is social and emotional wellness. And I just want to revisit a list of things to further bolster my gratitude for prioritizing dyslexic children. Consider the effects of not doing this. And Kelly, you mentioned it just a moment ago, you linked it to social-emotional learning, and I appreciate that. These are the kids, these are not, these are not statistics. This is not just a topic. To me, and several of the people sitting behind me, these are our kids. So, these are the kids that come home from school, when they're four grade levels behind in reading, and they say things like, "I'm the dumbest kid in the school, I hate myself." And we, there's only so, it's a call to action. There's only so much you can take of that as a parent. These are the kids, when they go unremediated, have, to say academic difficulties is an understatement. They feel dumb, they feel stupid, they feel inferior to their peers. They have, their self-esteem plummets. Social isolation is not uncommon for these kids to experience. They are targets for being bullied, or being the bully. They, they experience somatic complaints, anxiety, school refusal, learned helplessness, behavior problems, which often are more obvious to academics. And obviously, anger is another one. So, these are all the things that can happen if we don't answer the call to action. So, I appreciate that you do it. I'm grateful that there's going to be a pilot of a screening tool. I missed the name of the screening tool. Dr. Kling?
It was through AmesWeb, it's the SheaWitz Dyslexia Screener.
Okay. I believe that that's the same one that was discussed in the video of the Medford School Committee meeting.
Possibly.
I'm almost positive it is, but I'm not sure. And I'd just like to go on record for saying that the fundamental flaw with that is that it's teacher-based. It's a teacher assessment, which actually is no different than what we're already doing. So, I would encourage that, where it hasn't been chosen yet, if you would kindly go back and look at it, think screening tool. It's a little bit like, little bit like you, your child arrives for kindergarten, they get screened for impairments, right? Hearing, vision, and this would be another tool. And then, refer, obviously, to pediatrician. So, my worry, I'm so grateful for everything that's on that, that plan, but that one thing about the tool is a little bit concerning, and I'd just ask you to just revisit it, just to make sure it's the right one. I know that cost, obviously, will factor into it. But, if that's the issue, come back to the school committee and perhaps talk about options. But, leaving teachers as the screeners, rather than the child interacting with a screening tool, is not different than what we're doing already. And so, that, I do worry about that. And that is, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much for listening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comments? Okay, great. So, could we have moved to adjourned meeting?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.